Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the date of September 6th, 2023. We are in the Carver Town Hall and we are in Room 1 this evening. As is our custom, we begin this meeting with approval of minutes from our previous meeting, which was on the date of July 12, 2023. Also, as is my custom, I send these minutes in draft form to everybody in advance of our meeting so that we don't have to sit here and plow through multiple pages to make sure that they're accurate and no changes, amendments, or modifications are required. Did everybody have a chance to receive the meeting minutes, the draft minutes of September 6, 2023?
Yes.
Yes.
And has everyone had an adequate opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
Does anybody have anything that they'd like to change, add, modify, or amend with regard to these minutes?
No.
Hearing that there is no objection to the minutes as written, I ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Let me have a mic a little closer to you. Everybody, mic close. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So those meeting minutes of July 12, 2023 are approved officially. Okay, we have two public hearings this evening. The first of which is case number 125-19-2-R. And I'll read this into the record. The petitioner is Jeffrey Benoit. Is Jeffrey Benoit in the room? Hello, Mr. Benoit. Nice to see you. And Mr. Benoit is seeking a special permit pursuant to Sections 2250, 5221, and 5300, and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family residence on a pre-existing non-conforming lot for property located at 48 Cranberry Road in Carver, Assessors Map 125, Lot 19-0-R, in a residential agricultural district. Now, I see that our table is out of place, so perhaps a brawny gentleman either up here or in the audience can move that over.
They win.
Win. And a chair in back, please. Okay. Yep. They've got it. Now, I observe Mr. Benoit present, and next to him is a dapper gentleman who I recognize, his attorney Lawrence Hale. And I want both of you to speak up because these mics, we think that they're providing significant or adequate audio, and sometimes they don't. We want to be able to pick up every word and see your handsome faces on TV. Now, Attorney Hale, you're going to be representing the petitioner in this case. Is that true?
Yes, true.
Attorney Hale and I have had cases together over the years, as we're both Carver attorneys. I think maybe the only attorneys who are active in Carver. And we are currently working on a case together cooperatively, not on adverse sides. And this puts me in somewhat of a difficult position, as Attorney Hale well knows and board members as well. There are two kinds of conflicts of interest. The actual conflict of interest, where I might have some input or knowledge of a case that maybe I'm working on that then comes before this board, that would be an actual conflict of interest. And also, there is something a little bit more nebulous than that, and that's an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I am sensitive to that. This board has been sensitive to that in the past. Ms. Mello, do you have anything that you want to say?
Well, I wanted to ask you, based upon the fact that we do have a fiduciary relationship with the zoning gear, whether you should sit on this case.
Well, not a judiciary relationship, but a professional relationship. And it is an active, ongoing case at this point in time. So I'm thinking at this point, based upon the possibility of an appearance of a conflict of interest. It would be best for me to recuse myself under these circumstances so that there will be no question down the road that whatever decision this board makes based on the merits of this petition, there'll be no question about the impartiality of the board, and I'm not voting one way or the other because of Mr. Hale's presence on the case. Everybody understand my position?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Well, before we move forward...
Yes.
Because of the fact you recuse yourself, we're going to have four people sitting on the bench. We do not have, at this point, an alternate.
I'm sorry.
We do not have an alternate appointed to the board who could sit on this case. So that means that if we move forward with the case at this point, as you know, Attorney Hale, your client would have to have a unanimous vote in the affirmative, which would not be the case if we had five members. So I think maybe you should talk with your client, kind of explain what is going on here, and we can talk about how we want to proceed. Would you like to take a short break? You can call a recess and you can...
Yeah, we can short. We won't start the other case. We'll wait for you. Take your time, please. And if you decide that you want a full board, we'll be working to have an alternate seated at our next meeting. We'll be working on that. It's not always easy to find somebody, so I don't want you to think that we're absolutely positive. I would say sometime within the next 30 to 60 days.
Well, and just to let you know that I called today to find out if there were any applications for the open seat, and as of today, there are none.
At this time, the board will take a brief recess. Thank you, everybody. We'll be right back.
Okay.
All right, Carver ZBA back in session after a brief recess to allow Mr. Benoit and the very handsome Attorney Hale to converse. And gentlemen, what is your decision? Would you like to go forward this evening?
I have a question. I think, do you have a possible ultimate solution?
Well, as far as you asked me in the hallway, because I knew when the position would be filled, I do not. 30 days, 60 days, more likely. The other thing that you could do is withdraw without prejudice, wait until the position is filled, and come back. And I say that because of the clock. If we open the hearing, the clock starts ticking, and this way here, it would allow you time to know that we're going to have a full board fight.
And if we chose that route and then decided because it appeared to be that the involvement was not going to be seated, if we then submitted the application again, would we be on for the next hearing?
Yes.
So that's a little draw without prejudice.
Okay, so you're asking for us to allow you to withdraw without prejudice right now?
Exactly.
Okay. Is it a motion?
Before you entertain a motion, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You won't have to file another application fee.
Right. Correct.
Now, I'm going to be quiet, and I'm going to go sit over there.
I appreciate your help. Okay, I am ready to entertain a motion to allow the applicant, Mr. Benoit, to withdraw his application for special permit without prejudice.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We certainly appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, perhaps a motion about the application fee?
Oh, okay. Could I also have a motion that Mr. Benoit would not have to pay another application fee based upon the circumstances of the request for withdrawal?
Yes, I'll make that motion to waive the fee for the next time you're out before us.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Do you have any idea what these are working with?
This one.
That's it?
Everything's going through this one.
Okay. Just use this, put it in the room.
Okay, great. Thanks.
You know, I could hear it.
I think that's why he put this one up here.
Okay.
There might be an issue with the connection. I'm not sure.
Okay. Just one of those nights.
Okay, we're going to move on now to our second public meeting for the evening. That is a petition filed by... Where's my agenda? I got it. I got it. I got it. The petitioner is Rob Diambrosio Esquire on behalf of Vittorio M. Ardiano June.
Present.
Seeking a variance following an appeal of a decision by the Building Commissioner denying a request to install a nine-foot-high-by-22.83-wide-wall sign that's 205.47 square feet. The proposed wall sign exceeds the maximum area of 10% of the building wall pursuant to Section 3521. The subject property is located at 7 Commerce Way at Assessors Map 21-2-2. And so, as with the previous case, I observe the actual party in interest, Mr. Ardiano present with counsel, Attorney Diambrosio. And I ask for some comments, I assume, from the attorney about what you'd like to do while you're here. Just give us a short synopsis. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Good evening. Zoning Board Appeals, the record's Dr. Diambrosio, Diambrosio Law in Plymouth. And as Chairman Gray noted, I'm here with Mike Clyde. The buzz are down. So this proposal, as was read into the record, is for a roughly 205-square-foot sign on a building at 7 Commerce Way. It's an externally illuminated sign, as proposed, and this property's in the industrial district. As most of you are probably familiar with the site, you can see it from Route 44, and it's accessed off of Plymouth Street, and it's near the Plumpton and Middleborough town lines. The reason that we're here tonight is we filed our signed permit application, and we were denied, if I might say, somewhat apologetically acknowledged by staff that there is no special permit avenue available to us to exceed the dimensional standards for signs that are set forth in the zoning bylaw, specifically Section 3500. It's worth noting that in the past, until 2022, my research indicated if you wanted to seek a so-called oversized sign, you could file a special permit application, which would be heard by this board. When the bylaw was amended in 2022, the language in the bylaw was changed, and kind of, to me, it seemed a bit odd, but it didn't provide any avenue for seeking a sign in excess of what's set forth in the signage table, section of the bylaw. I don't know if that was intentional or if that was an oversight. I will say, in my experience, for what it's worth, I think it's unusual not for a zoning bylaw not to incorporate some means of relief for items such as this, for what it's worth. By way of example, in 2012, Mr. Ardiano actually received a special permit under the then-current bylaw to exceed the dimensional requirements for a sign in this very same district, in fact, right next door. So this blue-sky sign used to be Mr. Ardiano's former company, Rebuilds', and that was the 2012 permit. So there is some precedent under the prior zoning bylaw for that type of approach. That had not been available to us tonight, we were compelled to seek a variance. That was the guidance the staff provided to us. So we're here to ask for relief from this board. I think that, you know, what I would point out is I don't think that this is detrimental to the area. I can run through the variance criteria. Again, I don't want to rehash everything that you had in writing, but, you know, there are four criteria for a variance. You know, one is...
Can I stop you there for a second?
Yes, sir.
Let me see if I can kind of put my own spin on this.
Please.
And at the end, please feel free to either disagree or amend, but in 2019, the then-version of the Carver bylaws, in effect, gave jurisdiction over sign issues to the planning board as the special permit granting authority they had to signs. At some point in time prior to that, actually, we had the authority, and then it went over to the planning board, and good for them. But as counsel suggests, the bylaw that came into effect in 2020, the bylaws were amended at town meeting, and that bylaw, the current bylaw, the one that was passed in '22, that sort of changed things, is silent as to the specific local authority, Town of Carver Authority, which has jurisdictions in cases involving requests for oversized signs, such as the petitioner's request in this case. The planning board retains its jurisdictional authority over all other sign requests, but in this instance, the signed bylaw is silent as to oversized signs. So where does this leave us? Section 5221 and Section 5310 give this board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, authority to grant special permits under circumstances when bylaws do not specifically designate otherwise. So the way I'm looking at this, and feel free to jump in and disagree if you wish, the way I'm looking at this is, since we do not have a bylaw that specifically designates who the special permit granting authority should be in the context of oversized sign requests, that authority devolves to us pursuant to 5221 and 5310. We good so far?
Yes, sir.
Now, the next question that occurs to me, and this is why I stopped counsel who presented, I think, very accurately up to this point when I interrupted. I don't know whether this is really a request for a special permit or a variance. Now, I know you were about to talk to us about variances. It seems to me that we're talking about a special permit here, not a variance. The 48 requirements having to do with land, soil, topography, the shape, it doesn't really seem to fit together with someone who is looking for approval for an oversized sign. I think this is better cast, in my opinion only, as a request for a special permit. Now, the request that came in per the application was for a variance, and as fine as an attorney as you are, I think it'd be challenged, at least by me, to cast this in a 48 light, this request. Again, I think this is much more a special permit situation than a situation where we're trying to shoehorn this into a 48 variance situation. So I want to take a breath here and see what your opinions are, not only with regard to our jurisdiction to hear this case, but also whether this is a special permit situation that we're being asked to deal with or a variance situation that we're being asked to deal with. Jennifer, what are your thoughts about this?
I'm still processing.
Okay. Mr. Barrington?
I'm leaning towards a special permit.
Well, let's take this one at a time. Let's talk about our jurisdiction first, because if we have no jurisdiction, then we cannot hear this case, right? We all know what jurisdiction is at this point, right? It's the authority or the power to hear a case. We've had this on some pretty controversial matters, as we all know, recently, right? Where we found that we did not have jurisdiction. But again, there are specific bylaws that grant us authority to grant special permits in circumstances when the bylaws do not specifically designate otherwise. And because of the change in 2022, as counsel pointed out, the authority, the special permit granting authority, is not listed as the planning board for signs, for oversized signs, and not listed to anybody, with anybody. So in that case, I think we have the default jurisdiction, based upon how I look at this. So what are your thoughts on that, Mr. Barrington?
I agree with what you said. I think that is the only clear way to go at this.
I'm wondering how it got... Who denied you the...
So it was the Building Commissioner.
Who didn't really have the jurisdiction?
No, he does not.
He does not?
He has been granted that by the planning board.
Oh.
The planning board, I believe in '22, had decided that...
But it's still not... But it's still not decided in the bylaw that he's the one who's... Is that correct?
In 3560, it says that the Building Commissioner will review the application.
Okay, I got you. That answer your question? Yep, it does, yes. So specifically then, with regard to the jurisdictional issue, you comfortable with the jurisdiction resting with us? Yes. For the reasons I... Absolutely. This is all legal. I mean, this is not something that we're pulling out of thin air here, right? We have the specific references in the bylaws and stuff defaults to us if it's designated to be within the jurisdiction of a different board. Ms. Mello?
I'm... I agree.
You good on the...
We have the right to add a special permit.
Counsel, are you good with our jurisdiction?
I would very much appreciate your exercise in this question.
All right, so let's go on to the next somewhat thorny issue, and that is, is this a request for a variance to be granted permission for the oversized sign, or is this a request for a special permit?
I think it's a special permit.
And I see Mr. Barrington shaking his head, not because he has a palsy, but because he agrees, right? Ms. Cullen?
Based on what I've read in here, I agree with your assessment.
And Madam Vice Chair?
You would never say no.
Now, the next issue is, what are we going to do about this? Because the petition was filed requesting a variance and not a special permit. Are we good proceeding on the basis of the fact that this is more neatly fit into the special permit box as opposed to the variance box? And should we go forward on that basis tonight? On the merits? Yes.
Yes.
Unless it impacts them negatively to do so. That would be my only concern. Ms. Mello?
I wouldn't see it's public hearing. It's very well defined in here what they're looking for and how they're going to do it, so I believe we can hear it, and anyone who's interested can speak.
Yeah, the case that I... Another paragraph that I read into the record. Ms. Mello is, as usual, right on point, and that is, the notice has to be specific enough to give the public fair notice of what it is that is in issue. And, you know, we often have to get very technical and very legal, and that's something that is our charge. We have to do that. But for purposes of public notice, notification, I think that the case, as I read it into the record, and as Ms. Mello pointed out, is specific enough to give everybody notice who wanted to come in and be heard about this tonight. So for me personally, I'm okay proceeding on the basis that this is really a request for a special permit rather than a variance, because otherwise we'd have to send you back, and this would have to be re-advertized, and we'd have to start all over again.
Understood.
And we've told people that they've had to do that in the past, but this is a different situation, in my view. So if everybody is prepared to proceed on the basis of this being a special permit request, counsel, I turn the floor over to you. This would be a much easier and less strained legal argument for you to make that way.
I appreciate the thoughtful review that you give this matter and the flexibility you demonstrated, and I certainly agree with the reasoning. So in terms of making an argument for this board to grant a special permit, you know, I think that I would hang my hat on the fact that this... There's really no detriment to granting this relief. I mean, not only do we have a very similar sign on the building next door, this sign is no nuisance to anyone. There's nobody residential to which this sign would be visible, but it's a major highway. I believe it's a federal highway, Route 44. And, you know, it's a tasteful design, in my opinion. I don't think it's oversized per se, oversized pursuant to bylaw, but in terms of the scope of the building, I think it's relatively modest in scale. It's not going to have internal illumination or handle affect any of the restricted components within the zoning bylaw. So I think we're simply looking for to exceed the sign. In terms of how much we're exceeding requirements by, as you may have noticed in the inspection service's denial, they categorize our petition under second to last row of the industrial signage table, which is individual letters or symbols, which may not exceed 10% of the wall area. Mr. Ardiano calculates the wall area to be approximately 1,300 square feet, and as a proportion of that wall area, we're just shy of 15%. So we're not dramatically exceeding the area, and furthermore, I think if you looked at just the lettering rather than the overall footprint of the whole sign, gosh, we might be at less than 10%. But again, that's probably a bit of a strained interpretation, but for what it's worth, you know, this is not a monolithic big white billboard affixed to a building. It really is... So I think it's unintrusive. I don't think it's detrimental to the public good, and I think that disallowing it would, you know, would impose quite a detriment to my client in terms of his ability to market his business, and I think Mr. Ardiano's got a very nice track record in the Town of Carver as a corporate citizen. So I would ask you to please consider it, and I'd also like to give the floor to Buzz. You may have something to add. I don't think that thing works.
I don't think it's working. Okay, that's fine. Time to talk about it. Yeah, no, I appreciate the update. So just, you know, for the record, I lived in town from 1999 to 2013, and I was heavily involved in the signed by law in the early 2000s, and helped write a lot of that with Jack Hunter. And I wasn't aware of that change until Robert brought it to my attention. So I'm very familiar with the signed by law. So I'm very familiar with the signed by law, and quite frankly, I'd like to get my new business signed up on the side of the building that I own now, so if they find me.
Are you going to take a picture of yourself standing by the new sign like this?
I think I will.
I have a couple of quick questions, and I'm going to turn the floor over to the rest of these nice people up here. You say, based on your own measurements, the new sign, the proposed sign, will be about 15%, 15, 1-5 of that wall space, is that true?
Correct.
And you say it's unintrusive, but I want to know about lighting. Is that sign going to be lit at all?
It is, so this sign here that's existing now is lit by this white strip from above.
Yep.
With the light going down, and this would have the same strip above it.
So the words themselves are not going to be lit?
Correct.
It's going to be light illuminating the letters.
Correct. Down light, just like this one, and that is allowed under the sign by law.
I can read it without my glasses too, which is quite nice for change.
Now, I was sitting on the board when you came to us from the other side, and one of the things that we talked about was that we would be able to advertise this area as an industrial commercial area because it could be seen from the highway.
Correct.
Can this building be seen from the highway also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's a little obstructed in the summertime when the leaves are all in, but then when the leaves go away, it's full visibility.
So that kind of leads into what my next question is going to be, which is, why do you need this sign? It's off the road, the only people who go in there are the people that, you know, your contractors and so forth, I would imagine. So why do you need a big sign like this?
So if you indulge a long answer, so when I had my Rebuild X sign up there prior to having, getting acquired...
Is that the same building with the Rebuild X sign?
Yeah, so this was, this used to say Rebuild X, which was the permitted sign
Okay.
Back in the day, and then Blue Sky acquired my company in 2021. And so now I've started a new company called Build X, and we just made the name a little shorter. And, and it helps, it helps quite a bit with the marketing. When I'm in with a customer, over the years, when I had my Rebuild X sign, it takes about a year, and then as you're in with a customer, they'll say, oh yeah, I saw your sign off the highway, and it just adds credibility to the business.
Okay, so this, this sign is really not for the benefit of the public, the general public, it's for the benefit of your potential customers.
Correct. And it's all signed up. Do you know what size that other sign is, the Blue Sky one? It's a, it's the same width, and it's a little, their sign is a little bit shorter than mine. High wise.
What's the material?
It's acrylic 3D, and it's, it's attached to the wall, it's about two inches thick, and it sticks off the wall about two inches.
Okay, thanks.
And because you brought up bellboards, I just want to mention, you know, for, if this is approved, one of the reasons that I would consider approving it is because it's going to be attached to the building.
Correct.
It's not going to be attached to a sign that's going to be sticking on top of the building, similar to a billboard, it's actually behind the building.
You said three inches away from the wall?
Yes, to the face of it.
I have no other questions.
No other questions?
Ms. Cullen, so she's a little...
I'm ready.
You good?
Yeah.
Counsel, any final remarks?
Uh, no, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you and the thoughtful discussion, and the phase is in your hands.
Mr. Arton, are you good?
I am, again. Been a long time resident of town and had my park there, and I take pride in my park. I keep it clean and neat and, and pay a lot of taxes.
As we do all. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing? Oh, does anybody in the audience want to speak to this? You sure? I recognize that gentleman in the back, handsome guy. And I know who this is too.
Yeah, that's cool.
All right. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing? So moved. Second, on favor.
Aye.
I'm going to suggest a finding. I'll read this out loud, and then somebody should turn this into a motion, which then will need to be seconded and voted on. Everybody good?
Yep.
"The board finds that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site." So moved.
Second.
On favor. That for those who have not caught on by now, and who all probably have, so it's likely they don't even mention us, but that's the legal language necessary for the granting of a special permit.
Thank you.
Not done. Not done.
Take the wind. Always take the wind.
We should also have a motion made that, and maybe I did one before the other, wait, but I shouldn't have, but we should also have a motion that the petition or application that's filed is a request for a special permit and not for variances. So moved. Second.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So that should have come first, and I apologize, this is a variant, this is a special permit situation, we have voted on the special permit language. And I think it might also be a good idea to vote on this as well, that the board finds that the proposed construction, in this case, which is the attachment of the oversized sign to the wall on the building as designated, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing, any existing non-conforming structures in the neighborhood. So moved.
Second.
On favor. Okay. So the next thing that we vote on is the actual granting of a special permit, which is a motion that is required to be made by one of you, that the board agrees to grant a special permit under the circumstances as presented this evening by counsel and the petition.
I, can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Can we put in a condition more to exceed 15%?
Yes, yeah, and that's where I'm going once we vote to allow the special permit. So this is actually the vote to allow the special permit. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we grant, allow the special permit for the increased signage for the building, which will not, and this, this goes, well, let's do a second.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Next, Ms. Mello rightly points out that we need a condition, or two, or three.
Can we make it? In the past, we've made it as submitted, per the plans that have been submitted, and I just would hate for this to end up being all the way across.
Okay, so I think what Ms. Mello is suggesting is a condition which states that the sign shall not be greater than 15% of the wall space, the exterior wall space on that side. Are we comfortable with that, or do we want to make it less than 15%, which would then bring down the size of the sign?
I think 15 is good.
That's what he's looking for. Get the right to get up to 10 anyway.
Right.
Guess if somebody want to make a motion as to that condition.
I'll make a motion to put a condition that the sign not exceed 15% of the wall space per the information submitted at 2019.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Next condition, and this again goes to something that you said, which is, we're going to make this eventually subject to the plans of record, but specifically as represented by counsel and the petitioner. The sign is to be acrylic, a 3D acrylic sign that will extend outward from the side of the building by no more than three inches. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
So moved. Second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
And then finally, lighting. Lighting in this case will be above the lettering of the sign, down facing, above and down facing from the top of the sign. So moved. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
And finally, this will be subject to the plans of record. So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
So there you go.
Thank you.
Now you may leave.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Always put his bag, you know.
Our easel, yes.
You want me to leave the table there or?
No, we'll get it.
We'll get it.
Good to see you, Buzz.
All right.
You need to rest now.
Thank you.
Well, also, nice to see you again.
Great, thanks.
We have a couple of other matters on the agenda tonight under discussion. Actually, one under discussion and one that was just brought to my attention by the vice chair, and that has to do with some information that she's obtained about one of our previous cases, where the construction which this board allowed has apparently exceeded the scope of our decision. Ms. Mello, do you care to report to us?
So we had a case come before us, should I give the address?
Yes.
48 South Meadow Street, and we've been going on the board, the applicant was looking for an oversized garage hobby shop, and I believe the size was somewhere close to 2,400 square feet, which far exceeds what we permitted for a detached garage previously. So the applicant, after discussion, withdrew without prejudice and redesigned the structure to be an open pavilion with a 600 square foot two-car garage in the back, which is allowed by law, the two, the size of the enclosed garage. In our decision, we very specifically said to the applicant, we will allow you to withdraw without prejudice with the understanding that you do not, if you build this pavilion, which are now before us, you do not enclose any part of the pavilion structure, and when you drive by, he has started to enclose. So we got a building permit for the pavilion and the 600 square feet, and it appears that there is plywood going up on one side. So the building inspector, as the enforcement officer, has, is looking into the case and will be coming to actions.
Any questions to Ms. Mello?
I believe his permit was 2021. Does anyone familiar?
I'd have to see the property to really remember.
Yep, and you can have it.
We've seen, we've seen a few garages the last couple.
Yeah, but not many with pavilions like...
Well, that's true.
That's true. I do remember this one. And I'm going to ask if everybody's done talking about this, so thank you for that excellent detailed report. I'm going to ask you to email me tomorrow a brief summary of what you just discussed.
Yep.
So that I can include it in the discussion section of our minutes.
Yep.
And any other location that we think is appropriate and necessary to add appropriate public notice.
You said that was 48?
48 South Meadow, and the structure can be seen from the roof.
Okay.
It is a little tucked in there, but if you look, it can be seen.
Yeah, and this is about closing in when you're told not to close.
Right.
So just going to look at it, be seated, and Ms. Mello will provide me with a short synopsis, including the official record. We have one other matter to discuss tonight before we can finish our work, and that is... I don't know why I keep misphrasing my agenda. Here it is. Discussion of use of former board members and/or other individuals as unpaid, non-voting consultants on certain projects. Now, as everyone up here is aware, and probably also some of you at home, we have lost two highly experienced, two highly experienced board members in the last year or so because of changes in bylaws or because people have left town and moved outside of the town limits. They are Mr. Mueller, who was a longtime board member, longer than even Ms. Mello, who's been with us, she, she just pointed out, for 13 short years.
13 years.
And Ms. Clark, who left town recently, moved into Plymouth after serving 31 years on this board. So that experience is, or that, you know, that, that loss of experience is a terrible loss for the town of Carver. And we may also need assistance professionally from consultants who we might want to reach out to from time to time on specific issues, specific cases. For instance, we have used in the past on 40B applications, we've used consultants. So it's not just former board members by any stretch, there's also perhaps the need to use consultants to assist us with regard to other areas of the law that we will need some guidance on going forward. So I want to turn this discussion over to the other board members and see what their, what their reaction is to this. Ms. Mello, why don't I begin with you?
Okay, one thing, the other boards in town have experts, have advice. The planning board has an engineer who is really part of their board.
And a planner.
And a planner, who is part of their board, who, who guides them, who gives them advice, who answers questions. The RDA has consultants that they use when they have projects before them, based upon the project. We did use a consultant with the 40B. It's the only time in my 13 years on the board that I remember, other than asking our legal counsel for advice. So I think in today's world where everything is so governed by the law, and, you know, according to the bylaws of the town, of the state, sometimes of the county, we should have people, or we should feel free to use people who have the expertise, that would be, that's just my opinion.
Subject matter experts.
Yep, yep.
What say you, Ms. Cullen?
Um, I, I think it's a great idea to have somebody that may know more about a subject or a situation than, I use subject matter experts in all aspects of my life, so I think it's important.
I believe there's nothing wrong with having somebody that we can consult with to help us make prudent decisions that we shouldn't be making, and somebody with experience in this, these areas.
I would agree with everything that everyone has said. It would be foolish to not take advantage of that expertise if it's being offered.
At no cost to the town, mind you, and these people will be non-voting consultants, so we don't lose any of our authority. We are just reaching out to see if we can get some guidance on issues that might be particularly thorny or issues we've had little or no experience with in the past. So this is not, we're not going to be voting, and we will vote on this, we're not voting for any specific person yet, nor do we have any specific person in mind. I know that all of you agree that we try to do the very best job that we can, and we try to be as informed as we can be, and... we try to be as informed as we can be and as impartial as we can be, as demonstrated, for instance, by my recusal tonight. But if there are folks out there that are well-versed in certain subject areas, as Ms. Cole pointed out, and as Member Coria pointed out, it would be, in my mind, foolish not to use them. Now, there should be some guidelines, and I want to suggest a few to you folks to see what your thoughts are about these. First, if we are to reach out to anybody, we must confirm first, before we get into any of the merits of these cases that they might be helping us with, we must confirm first that that individual does not have any conflict of interest. Second, that their involvement with us be defined and established by a vote of the board in open session, so everybody knows what we're doing. We will, as I just said, we will be specific about the role that they will be assumed. And that their involvement be disclosed fully to all interested parties. Interested parties is sort of a catchword. What it means really in legalese is parties that are coming before us and arguably as well the direct abutters. So we want to make sure that the usage or the reach out of any one person is disclosed fully to all interested parties, and that these parties be given the opportunity to object. So I want folks to know that although we might be inclined to use or reach out to somebody, that we will give others who are present during these discussions the opportunity to object and to be heard. And finally, that any advice or information that is afforded to the board at our request be made part of the record. This can be done either if the person comes in and says, "This is what I think," or it can be done by way of a memo, or an email, or fax, or whatever. This doesn't have to be anything fancy. And a lot of cases, it's just a little bit of direction that we might need, or confirmation on how we might be viewing a bylaw. These bylaws, as I said last night when I appeared before the select board, are confusing, even for someone like me, sometimes. Some of them are not very well-written, and they're vague, or they're ambiguous. So I do the best I can trying to interpret them, and I know each of you does as well. But I think, again, as Mr. Coria pointed out rightly, that if our goal is always to try to deliver the best service that we can to the town of Carver within the stretches of the law, the bylaws, state law, federal law, constitutional law, and our portfolio touches on all of those, it would be not a good thing to turn our back on people who might be available to us at no cost to give us direction. Now, Ms. Mello was so impressed by those last remarks that she's coughing.
Now you get that tickle?
Yes, yes. So does anybody have any final remarks on this? And I'll cast this in the form of a motion, and we can vote on it and be done as soon.
I would have one, just a quick clarification. When you say that the parties or abutters would have the ability to object, does that necessarily mean just because they object that we can't use them?
We would vote, and that vote would be the basis on which we decide if we'd not decide to use that person. Okay?
But you're looking at, I understand, so you want people to be able to be heard on anybody that, you want to, just like they can for a defense.
That's right.
Yep.
So, I'm going to cast this in the form of a motion. I'm going to make a motion. That the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals use as appropriate individuals as unpaid non-voting consultants on certain projects that may come before us for decision, subject to certain conditions which will follow. Do I hear a, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, here are the conditions, that before we reach out to any individual as an unpaid non-voting consultant on specific projects, not on everything, but just on specific projects. One, that a designated member of the board make a determination that the person to whom we might be reaching out, or the organization to which we might be reaching out, doesn't have to be an individual necessarily, does not have a conflict of interest. That's number one. Number two, that their involvement will be defined by us and established by a vote of the board in open session. Third, that the involvement of these folks will be fully disclosed to all interested parties, and that folks will be given an opportunity to object to their involvement. And last but not least, any advice or information given to us by these folks, we made part of the record. Again, I want to emphasize that when I speak about individuals, it could also mean appropriate organizations, who would then have to designate an individual who might be prepared to help us. So, having said that, are we all in agreement on these conditions?
Yes.
This is all above board. And I don't know how often we're going to be reaching out, because we're a pretty experienced board at this point. Ms. Mello and myself have been doing this for a while, and the three of you to my left have caught on very quickly, and the, the expertise, I think, which we show as a board at this level in the town is, and I'm being, not very impartial when I say this, but I think we're unparalleled in terms of our education and experience and our ability to handle these often very thorny land use questions. So, I have a motion to adopt these four conditions as I just said. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? And again, I don't know how often we're going to be doing this, but I think I, you know, it's a good thing to do, especially since we've lost these two very experienced board members. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to say further this evening about any issue? I hear none.
Well, should we set a meeting for October?
What's your thought on that? We have no cases in the queue.
We, we only have the, the one that was waived for tonight. I feel we have an alternate.
Yeah, I don't know when that's going to be refiled.
So...
We can do a tentative date now, anticipating that that will be refiled shortly.
Yeah.
So that they have an understanding as to, you know, when they're going to be back here, and then we're all going to have to work to see if we can recruit a, an alternate.
Yeah.
So that, Ms. Cole raises a good point. What did she have thought about that, Mr. Coria?
Um, that's enough. Thought we voted a while back that we had established a particular Wednesday.
Yeah, but not on a Monday that we have no, no cases.
Oh, no, I understand that.
And so, we decided, what, the second Wednesday of the month?
Okay.
And we have October month. Right, so that would be...
What date again?
October 11th.
Well, I guess my question would be, what's the likelihood, well, because we don't know.
Of course.
How they're going to file, and we also don't know whether we're going to have
Right.
An alternate, or an alternate.
You have the application process, it has to go through the TA, then the select board has 15 days to veto, so it could be a little bit longer.
It could be at least two months.
It could be.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the other thing we should talk about as we sit here is maybe emphasize to the audience that we are looking for...
That's how you got me.
Someone who would be interested in joining our board, having our net.
You've got us.
Yeah, there you go.
Again, Ms.
Joining us.
Ms. Mello has made many excellent comments tonight, this being the most recent and hopefully the last of the year. So what do you want to do? What's the second Wednesday in November, Mr. Barrington, the keeper of the calendar?
November 8th.
November 8th. What's your thought about that, understanding that we've got some recruitment to do, and then there's a process that the nomination has to go through as well?
Unless something comes up before then.
They wouldn't have time to file it and nominate.
Well, the other thing is, remember, we, we might also be getting new cases. I could get a new case notification tomorrow. So I think the way we should leave it is, let's, let's do November 8th so we can get that down in our respective schedules.
Okay.
And then if something comes up, and I'll be made aware of it, whether it's on the, on the alternate end, or whether it's a new case, I'll notify everybody.
Excellent.
November 8th. Everybody good with that?
Perfect.
And I'll notify the, the folks here at Town Hall that that is our, that's our date, that's our placeholder for now. Ms. Mello, you okay?
Yep.
Mr. Coria? You betcha. Mr. Keeper of the Calendar?
Right.
You have two nicknames now, Keeper of the Calendar and our tree guy.
Our tree guy. I haven't had to do that lately.
Yeah. What else does anybody want to bring up at this stage? Well, thank you again, all of you, for your analysis tonight and remarks. Again, I think Carver is lucky to have these folks, not including myself, these folks in particular.
Oh, you're okay, Steve.
No, I have my moments. I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, what is?
We adjourn.
A second.
Mr. Barrington?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Carver.